Good evening. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, November 5th, 2015, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas at 6:00 PM. For the purpose of reviewing that portion of the November 9th, 2015, school board agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would like to also take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance. Nicole, we got anybody here? Okay. I don't blame them. It's packed out tonight. And then our AVP students, they're from Cypress Woods High School. Zach Port, Matt Bonzer, Connor Ross, and Dane Ruckstuhl, and their AVP advisor is Lori Andrade. So we want to thank them. There they are on the TV. Y'all are looking good. The board will hear the following reports. Agenda item 5A. The administration will provide a design development report on the progress of the design of the new transportation facility and new ag science center at the corner of West Green Boulevard and West Campus Drive near the new Cypress Park High School about a mile from Church's Chicken down the left. Who put this together? This is unbelievable. Unbelievable. Sorry. Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. I let that go. Okay, uh, this is gonna be Dylan and Dan.
Thank you. I want to introduce Ken Hutchinson with VOK Architects, who's gonna run us through the slideshow, and then we'll take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Dylan. President Ryan, board, Dr. Henry, thank you for inviting us here this evening to present the new transportation center and ag facility here for the district. During the design of the process, district staff has been heavily involved. They've been great participants in the meetings, going out, giving us ideas. You'll even see they gave us like flow diagram on how elements of the transportation center should work. As part of this, what you're going to see tonight in the project, this is a brief program overview of both buildings. The ag barn totals 20,453 square feet, while the transportation center comes in at just over 45,000 square feet. Along with that, there's also an area where there are covered bus barns for 200 buses, and that's about 132,000 square feet. And then there's also a wash bay and fueling station area also that's separate of the main building. That's another 11,000 square feet. So you can see here what we did during the process. You can see the flow diagram of work within the warehouse and transportation building in the upper left. We also toured with staff existing Cyfair ISD transportation facilities, as well as facilities at other districts, looking at how they worked within those buildings, looking at their safety concerns, issues they had had when they designed those buildings and how they operate those buildings, and learning from other districts and your staff of how they wanted the new facilities to go together. And so the new campus is located next to high school number 11, and it is north of 529 Freeman Road, east of Grand Parkway. They're at the corner of West Campus Drive and West Green. The top building A is the ag facility, and the T is for the transportation. So we're located right across the street from the new high school. This is a close-up of the site. You can see here you've got West Green and West Campus. This is our parcel of land here, and on that, we've divided that into two different sections. This is main transportation here. This is the ag center here. And so you can see all the parking and drives and everything go around here. Driver parking is separated from that area here, and there is a connector between these two sites here. Now to go into ag itself on the building there, is you come into here, there's a keypad gate, electric mechanically operated gate here. This is the only entrance way into the site. So students with trucks and trailers are just checking on their animals will come into this drive. The gate's low and located far enough in that you can pull in a truck and a trailer and be off of West Green Road, so you're not backing up traffic onto the roadway. As you come in, there's parking here. The main entrance is on this side, but the loop drive goes all the way around, and then this is a exit-only drive that's automatic when you pull up, but there's no access from the other side to come in. The only way into the site for security is right here. There is also a blue security phone located right here next to the entrance on the campus. And you can see by placing the roads out the perimeter of the site, it allows for the grazing areas to be here and here, so that students can take their animals out to the grazing areas and not have to go across the roadway. And so they're always within a fenced and contained area, because those areas are fenced in. The ag barn sits here, and then there are also two covered outdoor pavilions in this area here. So on the plan, this is the main entrance down here. You come in, this is all enclosed with a bird screen netting all the way around. These are the lamb and goat housings here. The swine are here in the pink, and the cattle in the red. There are 61 lamb and goat pens, 37 swine, and 12 cattle pens. There are also wash basins in this area here, restrooms and mechanical rooms. This is a tool room, storage, and these are tack and feed rooms here and here, and then there's gates all the way through here. And then these are the two covered practice areas here, and there's fencing and gate between the ag barn itself here and over into the practice areas here, and all of this is undercover. And this is a view, a perspective view of the front of the building, where you'll come in here. This is the bird nest mesh here that you see, metal pans above, and these materials are all taken to blend in with the new high school number 11. The brick is the same brick being used on that building. The burnished block that you see here is the same, and the metal panels are loads like on the high school. So the idea is that this is recognized as a Cyfair ISD campus, and our buildings and your new high school building all blend together and they complement each other. So now back to transportation. The main entrance will be off West Campus here. All the buses and everything will come up here into a mechanically operated gate here. Drivers will park in the mornings here, then they will come in. There is parking along here for administrative staff of the transportation here. The main building is here. This is the two-story administrative building. The service bays are here. This is a drive. There's a wash basin here. The fueling is here undercover, and the fuel tanks are here. The barns are here. This is a 100-bus barn here and here, and then there is also looped drive all the way around these areas. The exit out is right here off of this side here, so buses will come in this way, and they can exit out that way. Along this, with that, we also have 31 head-in spaces here for buses that are not covered on this area of the site here. We've also provided a gate here, because there's been discussion with staff, that the maintenance crews taking care of the ag barn, mowing, cleaning things, could go through a gate here, so they don't have to exit, go down the road, and then come back in. They'll have an exit way right there for maintaining that building adjacent to them. So this is the main building at transportation. The administrative wing is over here, and so you've got administrative offices, driver's lounge, training room. This is part storage. The shop foreman is here. Restrooms here. This is the shop restroom here. These are the bus bays here. There are eight bus bays that pull in, full-size buses here. This is a half bay for your white fleet. This is an oil change bay where the bus drives over a pit, and workers go downstairs and work underneath the vehicles there. This is the tire-changing area here where a bus can pull in. The tires are on racks here, and all the equipment is here. Part storage, tool storage, different things are here. This is the paint and body shop. This is the body shop portion. This is the paint booth. It's a drive-in paint booth where you can drive in any vehicle, a bus or a white fleet vehicle, work on it here, and then take it out. And then this is the body shop foreman here, along with the upholstery booth here in this corner. Upstairs is the district-wide administrative area for transportation. Below is the transportation administration for just this area. Up above, it's for the entire district upstairs. And so you come up through stair here, elevator, or stair in this area here, and these are administrative offices around there. This is a break room. This is a large conference room where they can get everybody together, and here's the various level of folks within the administration of the district. And then this is just the upper area of the shop here next door to it. There's no occupied spaces here on the second level above the shop. This is the view from West Green and Campus, West Campus. This is the main entrance of the building here. It's brick, again, that comes from the new high school 11. Same way, this is the burnished CMU block that's on the high school. These are metal panels. We've incorporated the ribbon windows like over at the new high school, and then metal panels back here that match up with the colors and materials on the new high school as well. And then this is an interior perspective view of the new lobby as you come in. There'll be a waiting area here. This is the dispatch area here, and this is the keyboard here that is central to the facility. If you keep going through those doors there, you would walk back into the area where all the buses are parked out in the bus barns, and the lower, the administrative area for just this building is on the right. So where we are is we began in May of this year, and we are now in October. We have taken bids and proposals. We are presenting the design here to you tonight, and then also, I believe, on, at your board meeting this month, you're also awarding the construction contract for the project. And so we're looking at opening this building in the fall of 2016, and we are on schedule. And so if you have any questions or comments, be pleased to receive those.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions from board members?
I'm sorry, and it's probably not directed at you, but since we're gonna have the administration for all of traffic move out here, where were they exactly, Roy?
They're currently located at our Falcon facility right now, and one of the issues we have, Mr. Kovey, is that we wind up having, with them all being in one building on the first floor, we always have some issues with dealing with personnel issues and so forth. They want to go straight to the central administration instead of going to the center itself, administration. So we feel by doing this separation and putting it on a second floor, it's gonna give that isolation that's needed.
I think it's a great idea. I just wondered where they were coming from. Thanks.
Need Tom?
Christine and I have both been through the Falcon facility. When we moved to the new facility, have you added sufficient infrastructure to accommodate technology changes, both for now for the larger fleet, but what may also come for the next five to 10 years?
Technology has been incorporated into the building based on the needs of what was gone through, and we have looked at having space and spares and ability to upgrade the technology within the building over the future time period.
So you do in fact have the ability to expand, should the needs of technology be enhanced, you have the ability to answer those enhanced needs?
Yes.
Whatever they may be. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ken, thank you. That, that plan really looked great, and I think the neighborhoods will be coming around it, will appreciate the outer beauty of it as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce the team, if I may.
Yeah, please do.
With me tonight is Brad Ewing, who is project designer on the projects. You can stand up. Deborah McDowell, she is the project manager for transportation. Marie Sheen, she is the project manager for the ag facility. And then also with us tonight is partner Todd Lean, and Tim Koontz, who's a project director with our firm.
Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Once you leave, you're gonna take about 50% of the audience, but we appreciate you being here for this first part of it. That's pretty awesome. Agenda item 5B. The administration will provide a design development report on the progress of the design of the new satellite cold storage warehouse located at the corner of Spring Cypress Road and Woods Spillane Boulevard.
Dr. Henry, Board of Trustees, associates, very pleased to be here to provide and introduce IBI Group to give you an update on the new cold satellite food warehouse. I can't say that it's located next to Church's Chicken, but it's strategically located on the Cywood site next to existing amenities, so.
That's good.
Like to introduce Mark French and Mr. David Valerius with IBI Group.
Mr. Ryan, members of the board, and Dr. Henry, we're pleased to be here tonight to present the satellite cold storage warehouse. This, as Dan mentioned, is on the Woods Spillane and Robeson site. To give you a quick overview, it's located on the north end of the site. The cold storage warehouse will be located off of Spring Cypress and Woods Spillane Boulevard, close to Robeson Elementary. And to zoom in a little bit, the warehouse property itself is a tall warehouse structure with a single entrance, similarly to what Ken had mentioned on the bus and ag facility. There is a operable gate. It is far enough in that they can bring in a full rig and come off of Woods Spillane, so it does not back up traffic, although the traffic patterns for this facility occur very early in the morning, usually off-cycle of any of the campus traffic. And then around back, you have the loading docks directly into the warehouse, which I'll show you how that operates on the floor plan here in just a minute, and then areas for the trucks to back in, turn, and then exit the facility as they bring in product to the warehouse or load product to take to the campuses. Then the area off to the left of the slide right here is actually for interim trailer parking, district-owned trailers, as they stage them for different deliveries. The warehouse itself is mainly a freezer space. The top area up here on the top of the slide is actually a large freezer space of about 7,000 square feet. It has a 30-foot ceiling, so it's high rack volume palletized frozen product. The area to the right is a 6,000-square-foot, I mean a 3,000-square-foot freezer space, similarly a 30-foot-high space, high rack storage. The area to the left is a cooler space where they, when they bring the product out of the freezers, they manage it into bins to delivery to the campus. It is a lower space. It only has a 12-foot height. And as you can see, the loading docks to bring the product in and out. The cooler acts as a staging area, so that the product is not brought out into the loading dock until it's actually ready to go on the trucks and be delivered. In the front of the facility is a small administrative component that has a break room, some storage areas, restroom facilities, as well as a single office for the manager of the facility. And then above that, you know, mezzanine, is the actual mechanical space serving the air side of this facility. A view of the facility from Spring Cypress, you can see that the high volume of the space accommodates the 30-foot freezer. The vertical panels, it's kind of hard to see on this rendering, but they're divided, they're intended on picking up the vertical window elements that are located over on the Cywoods campus, so it starts blending the, the architecture. This is a tilt-up type of a concrete structure, so it is a warehouse-type structure for the economy of this type of facility. But the design of the exterior facade was intended on picking up the same motif that's already existing on the Cywoods campus. And then coming back from Woods Spillane, where the visitor and/or main entrance for the staff of the facility would be coming off from this side, where there's a small parking lot, because the staff at this facility is very low. There's only a few people that are there at any given time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. This project is currently going out to bid and will be presented at the next board meeting and due to complete in the latter half of next year.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions from board members?
I kind of had a comment.
You have a comment?
Kind of a comment. I just wanted to comment on and say thank you for the thought put in to these, these new projects, the efficiency, the aesthetic, making it blend in with the campuses that they're around. You know, people don't realize, as you, or they don't think about sometimes, as we grow, as we are, all the other things that we need to help this district function. And so it's really nice tonight to see the new ag barn and this cold warehouse and the transportation, so thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Mark, you go.
Yeah, just, just one comment, and it's not necessarily about just this facility, but to follow up on Christine. One thing that this community may like to know is that in most school districts, food service is a drain on local dollars, but our food service actually functions in the black every year. So I think that's the way the food service has been set up in this district has really benefited the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mark. Any additional questions?
Just, I'd like to introduce the team member that I have here is David Valerius. He's the senior project manager that'll be managing this project for the district.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks for being here, David. That'll take us to, the board will now review and discuss the following action items. Agenda item 6A. The board will consider awarding bids and contracts and authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. Commercial dough mixer for food service, horizontal flow wrapper for food service, music supplies, portable building tie-down, anchor removal, and installation proposal package, replacement furniture for Francone and Hancock Elementary Schools. Questions from board members? You got a question about dough mixer?
I do.
Lot of people looking at that. That's a biggie.
That's, that was my nickname in college, was Doughboy.
Poppin' Fresh! Poppin' Fresh! That's a question.
Poppin' Fresh, that was it, yes. Now I forgot what I was asking. No. What was I asking? Oh, the portable buildings. Just curiously, how many portable buildings do we have now that we're not using, Roy?
I believe we have a surplus right now of about 40. Is that correct, Dan? Approximately 40. Where we have a surplus building, we leave it at the campus until there's a need for it, and then we'll relocate it to the designated campus. In a lot of cases, we're actually letting some of the campuses use those buildings for storage and some other needs until we need to move it to another place in the district.
And just, in, in some of the visits that I've made, I've, I've heard comments from the administrating principal there that they really did need another portable and stuff like that, and so I wondered how many we had in reserve that we would be able to use, and what do we generally do? Do we, I'm sorry, this is probably off of the deal, but whenever they're asking for that, is that something we react to quickly, or do we wait about a semester, or what do we do?
Absolutely. Teresa usually gets the request, and we have a committee that we work together with Teresa and the rest of the team and evaluate the request, and we certainly try to accommodate whatever needs the campus has based on their instructional needs at the campus.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pop Bob. Oh, my bad. My bad. Oh, it is to me. Any other questions? 6B. The board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from general funds to the recommended contractor and authorized as superintendent or designated to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. Cyfair ISD, ISC, boardroom technology upgrades. Questions from board members? 6C. The board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractor and authorized as superintendent or designated to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. New transportation and ag science centers. Questions? We just went over that, in case you have another one, though. Tom?
Well, the first ones were on the design. This is on the actual contract itself.
Right.
Roy, last month, we talked about the impact of inflation. This is a different type of facility, so are we still seeing inflation hitting as hard on this type of facility as we would on a regular school construction site?
Actually, I'm happy to report to the board that this project, with us combining the two projects together, we saw some cost savings, as well as this project is significantly under what our projected costs were that we included in the 2014 bond. So we're hoping that this is a sign of times that we might see some stabilization in construction costs. You know, certainly it's a positive for this particular project. Hopefully, this trend will continue. But this is a little simpler-designed facility, so we're not seeing as much of an inflation, obviously with the results that we got on bid day for this project.
Very good. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Tom, are you okay with keeping that on consent?
Yeah.
Okay. 6D. The board will consider approving and authorize as superintendent or designated to enter into miscellaneous professional service contracts related to the following projects. New transportation and ag science centers, materials testing services, HVAC testing and balancing services, roofing inspection services. Questions? 6E. The board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period of July 1, 2015 through September 30, 2015. 6F. The board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. 6G. The board will consider approving the minutes of the October 12, 2015 regular meeting. That will now take us to our action item portion of the agenda. 7A. The board will consider approving the Cypress Fairbanks Professional Development and Appraisal System Certified Appraisers for the 2015-16 school year as outlined in the certified appraiser report. We don't have a presentation on that, just questions from board members. Any? I'd like to move that to consent. 7B and C, we're gonna have one presentation for both items, so I won't read both of those now. I think Stuart and Karen, this is your pickle, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Super. 7B. The board will consider approving the district's 2015 comprehensive annual financial report and accept the independent auditor's report on the district's general purpose financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015. And then we'll also go into C, 7C. The board will consider approving the independent auditor's federal single audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015, as required by provisions of the Single Audit Act of 1984, U.S. Office of Management and Budget Circular A-128. Stuart?
Thank you, President Ryan, members of the board, Dr. Henry. As you know, the TEA, or the Texas Education Code, requires us to have our Board of Trustees approve or accept our, the audit of our annual financial statements, 150 days by the end of the year. And so our independent auditors, Herford Lynch, Sellers, and Kirkham, have completed the audit of our financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015, and have issued its independent auditor's report on those financial statements, as well as the single audit reports that you're gonna hear about as well for that same fiscal year ending period. But before we present the comprehensive annual financial report, I, for fiscal year 2015, I want to really highlight and commend the work of Karen Smith and Mabel Isles, also Annette Pete in our financial services office, as well as Melissa McIner and the rest of our finance team. They just did an incredible job putting together, of course, throughout the course of the year. It's, putting together this 158-page report is not something that is done in a limited period of time at the end of the year. It's actually the compilation of, of a year-long accounting and reporting that we do on a, on a ongoing basis throughout the course of the year. But Mabel Isles is here tonight, and I would like for her to stand up, because really the bulk of the work that's putting together this report. report lays on her shoulders, and she is the one that really has done most of the work on this. And I just want to commend her and just congratulate her on the fine work that she's been doing on this report, as she does throughout the course of the year, every day for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mabel.
Go ahead, give Mabel a hand. Oh, hang on. Mabel, this will be recorded, so when you have your review, you might want to go ahead and just play it back for them. Tips from the pros, right there. Tips from the pros. Go ahead, Stuart.
Mabel certainly is a shining star in our office, and I appreciate everything that she does for us. Deborah Kirkham and Matt Rogers with our auditors are here tonight to present their audit opinion, which is one or two pages in this 158-page Comprehensive Annual Report. And so they will have an opportunity to talk about their audit opinion. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Karen Smith to make the presentation on the overall general fund year-end financial statements.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I'll be reporting on the district's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report in the single audit for the year ended June 30, 2015. On page 32 of your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, you should have gotten a copy of that, as well as the single audit report. The full schedule for the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance is in there, which shows for the general fund, the debt service fund, capital projects fund, and special revenue funds. However, I'm just going to be talking to you about right now, the general fund, the highlights associated with that. It is the main operating fund of the school district, and what people are used to hearing about is the general fund. You will notice that the district had an increase in fund balance, resulting in an ending fund balance of slightly over $348 million. Some of the highlights associated with the general fund is an increase in fund balance of $67.8 million and an increase in total revenues from the previous fiscal year of $61.2 million. This increase of $67 million is actually net of a $10 million contribution the district made to the non-TRS pension plan. General administration remains low at 1.7% of total expenditures. This is less than the average, state average, of 3%. Also, the administrative cost ratio was 3.6%, which is less than the ideal threshold for districts that have an average daily attendance of 10,000 or more, and the recommended amount is 8.55%. Some of the other highlights I want to mention is, you will notice there's, or you may not have noticed, there's about 20 additional pages in this year's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It is due to us having to report on the governmental accounting standards 68, 67, 68 and 71. GASB 67 required us to start including the non-TRS pension plan, which is our plan for substitutes, and report that is part of this report. We also issue separate financial statements on that separately. Also, GASB 68 required the district to start reporting its proportionate share of its TRS liability. And then GASB 71 required us to go back and report any contributions we made after the measurement date. And what that is, is it's for June 2014 through, I mean, August 2014, I mean, yeah, August 2014 through June 30, 2015, is what that reflects. So now, the pension liability that you will see in the government-wide financial statements, I want to highlight that it does not affect the governmental fund financial statements. And what that means is it does not affect fund balance or operating results. I will turn this over to Debbie Kirkham, so that she can go over the audit report, and then we'll be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Karen. President Ryan, members of the board, and Dr. Henry, glad to be here to give you the summary of auditor's results that is shown on page 11 of your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Again, this year, the district received an unmodified, a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance the district can receive on their financial statements. This year's audit, again, was conducted in accordance with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. We also did an audit on the major programs, federal programs of the school district. The major programs we tested this year were Title I, Title II, and Title III. And again, the district received an unmodified, clean opinion on those federal programs. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, along with Karen. And thanks again, as Stuart said, the staff. I know auditors come in, we send interim checklist, we send year-end checklist of what all that we would like to have prepared for us when we come through the door. And as Stuart said, you've got a great team, that they're prepared, they're professional, and they're courteous. And I know you know all those things, too, but I just want to highlight that, too. And special thanks to Mabel and Karen, because I know GASB 68 and 71 was a lot of change this year, numerous pages. So I thank them for all of their hard work. It's my job easier.
Thank you, Deborah. Questions from board members? Tom?
You knew I would have questions. There's no pictures, all numbers.
Okay.
To give you an idea how old I am, I actually was involved on the first, the first go-around of the first pension pronouncement that came out. That was a long time ago, probably before y'all were born.
See, we're up to 71. Was that number one that you were part of?
Stuart, this was before GASB. So it's before GASB was even born, not even a twinkle in your eye. You saw that movie? It was a good movie. Please identify the dollar amount of the prior period adjustment that occurred as a result of the application of these three pronouncements. We talked about this each of the last two years, so we knew that it was coming. So it's not a surprise. So how big was the overall adjustment?
Well, the prior period adjustment is on page 27, and that's $137 million. But if you'll notice on page 22, the actual liability for the TRS pension, for TRS, was $111.9 million.
Let me just point out also that, as we compared last year and the changes for 2015, we began the year with a net, a beginning net position number of $94 million. And then we actually had a change, a positive increase in net position of $102 million. And so even with that $137 million prior period adjustment restatement that we were required to make, we still ended the year with a $59 million positive net position.
And Ms. Kirkham, is it significant that, compared to other districts, that you have seen for us to end, even with that prior period adjustment, to end with a net positive balance?
I'm seeing many, all of my districts so far, that we've issued reports on work which are quite numerous amount, have ended with a positive position. But the state does, is aware that there are some districts that it's going to put in a negative position, but many are ending up positive.
Stuart, this is a question for you. As a result of the application of these pronouncements, have we had any change in our credit rating? And if we've had a change in our credit rating recently, say in the past three months, has it been an increase or a decrease?
Actually, it's a great question, and it's a question that, or the prior period adjustment of that magnitude could potentially, for any organization, impact their underlying credit rating or underlying bond rating, as you will. In fact, last year, we received an upgrade in our underlying bond rating from Moody's Investor Services. And then this year, as we are selling bonds currently, we've actually received an upgrade in our underlying bond rating from Standard and Poor's.
Thank you. We are required to identify changes in our initial budget that we put forth, and then we're required to aggregate those changes. Would you identify what the significant changes to the budget were? And I don't need the small numbers, but merely the large changes. Do you have that available?
Yes, yes. The main changes related to was a $27.5 million increase in property, in property tax revenue, or local revenue due to the increase in property values. And then the other was a decrease in expenditures, and that was related to TEA approving the student-to-teacher ratios, waivers that we requested, because we always planned for that, just in case they don't approve them. Then also, there was a one-time contribution that the state made for the 1.5% for the additional contribution on TRS. And so we had planned, just in case, you know, they did not provide that contribution, we had budgeted for that amount. We did not need that amount, so that was a reduction in our expenditures.
Let me also point out that just, as you know, we, in our budget process, we budget very conservatively, meaning that on the revenue side, we try to budget less revenue intentionally, by design, than what we think we're actually going to get. And then on the other side of that, the expenditure side, being conservative in that we try to overstate our expenditures, so that, you know, when we go through the course of the year, we can manage that budget very, very strictly, and be able to provide increases to fund balance, and be able to also respond to unexpected, unanticipated expenditures during the course of the year. So that has a lot to do with also, when you're comparing our actual results with our budgeted results, keep in mind that, of those conservative budgeting practices that we employ.
Thank you. Stuart, I think you've already asked this, provided the answer to the question I'm going to ask, but I'm going to ask it again to make certain I heard it properly. We had, we have two different types of pension plans. So we have a non-TRS pension plan, which had unfunded liabilities. And I think you indicated that we made a contribution. And if so, how much was that contribution that we made?
Yes, as Karen mentioned, we made a $10 million contribution. And that non-TRS pension plan was a defined benefit plan
Correct.
For our, primarily our substitute teachers, who are not covered under the TRS retirement system. And as you mentioned, we did have a unfunded liability of $10 million, or approximately $10 million, that we are in the process of terminating. And we've established a substitute plan, if you will, a defined contribution plan in which the substitutes, the employees will be contributing to that plan, and the district will not. And so, in the process of terminating that plan, we eliminated that unfunded liability by making that $10 million contribution. And as Karen mentioned, the $68 million increase to fund balance is net of that $10 million contribution.
So in summary, we have taken care of virtually the entire unfunded liability related from that pension?
Yes.
Correct.
Excellent. This is a question for Ms. Kirkham. It's the identical question that I asked you last year, but I think it bears repeating. There were a number of different districts last year that encountered certain unpleasant trees, as it were, related to internal controls not being sufficiently robust. You clearly have reviewed the internal controls here, and I know that your audit says that your work is not to directly uncover fraud. However, I would presume your work to be sufficiently detailed to bring matters to our attention. We have the report in front of us, so the questions are twofold. First, were there any weaknesses in internal control that you wanted to bring to our attention? And then secondly, did you identify any weaknesses in internal controls that plagued those two other districts? Did you find those weaknesses here in our district?
Yes, sir. There were no material weaknesses that would cause the financial statements to be misleading in a time period on a monthly basis, or in the fiscal year financial statements that we identified. Nor were there any significant deficiencies that we determined needed management's, governance, attention. The things that have happened at other districts are primarily because of the tone of the top, board members not being involved in making sure there was administrative staff that had the experience and the expertise to do the jobs, and as well as great segregation of duties and good business procedures. And I think that's different at Cyfair ISD. I think the board takes an active role to setting the tone at the top, and what their expectations are administrative. It flows on down, and you can see it through the work that these individuals do, and the preparation of the reports that they prepare and come to these meetings with.
Thank you. One last question. We have over 20 some odd different funds. And certainly, your work has to be based on those numbers that are material. But would you briefly describe what additional work you do, taking a look at any of the large funds?
Yes, sir. Primarily, we have to identify all the major funds, and of course, the general fund, debt service, and capital projects fund, and your trust and agencies, or individual opinion units that we identify separately and have to determine materiality, and determine the risks that are associated with each of those opinion units. And then in addition, besides financial statement audit, then we're also looking at single audits. So, in the state of Texas, even though a lot of your federal funds and state funds are not major funds, primarily, we review all the reconciliations for all your federal funds that are in the 200s to the 400 funds, that we refer to as special revenue and non-major funds. And even though they have that title, "non-major," we've probably spent a great portion of our time on those particular funds, because there's special reporting for TEA. And you've just got to make sure that everything ticks and ties on those, because of the PIMS reports and all the data file reportings, it's got to go in on those particular reports. Once you identify what your federal programs are, we determine every Type A program has to be audited every year, and a Type A program is primarily 3% of your federal funds, because you're greater than $10 million. And then those have a whole new criteria besides financial statement controls. There's approximately 14 compliance requirements that have to be tested, and those testings are done in regards to payroll and payables, and the things that are charged to those federal programs, and reviewing the control processes for those particular federal programs.
There is a program that, from a lay perspective, we refer to as the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. Is that one of the programs that you would have reviewed that receives federal funding?
Yes, it is one that we would have to review at least every third year. And they reviewed, last year, I believe, last year, was child nutrition.
Very good. Thank you. However, Mr. President, I still have a couple of detailed questions that I'll ask over the weekend, so I would prefer that these two items be left on the non-consent agenda.
Very well. Bob?
This is for you, Stuart. And I'm basically looking at the revenues that we had that came in, and it's excellent to see us in this kind of a position. So thank y'all for all the work you do. However, with the just recent election that we had, and the potential, we are going to be having an increase in the homestead exemption through the state, what is that adversely going to affect us as far as finances go on next year, do we think?
It's a great question, Mr. Covey. The increase to the state-mandated homestead exemption from $15,000 to $25,000 per homestead, an increase of $10,000, will impact our tax revenue. Obviously, it'll cause a loss of tax revenue because of that homestead exemption. And what we're projecting is that that loss would be on the MNO side, about $12 million, and on the INS side, about four and a half, $5 million. However, the way the statute is written, and the law was passed, the legislature is attempting to hold us harmless for that loss of revenue by providing additional state revenue to the amount that's supposed to be equal to the loss of tax revenue. Certainly, on the MNO side, probably not as likely on the INS side because of the way the law was written. way the law was written. The "hold harmless" on the MNO side, or the general fund, or the maintenance and operations is based upon the tax rate that you all have adopted as of September 1 of 2015, which was the dollar four. And so, "hold harmless" will be based on that, and then going forward into the future. On the INS side, it's a little bit trickier, I guess, and, mind you, none of the rules have been written about how this is going to happen, and what procedures TEA is going to make in terms of reimbursing us for this tax loss. But, on the INS side, the "hold harmless" is based upon the principal and interest that we currently pay on our debt as of September 1 of 2015. Of course, as you know, with a fast-growing school district like Cyfair, we will be continuing to be required to build new schools and other facilities, selling bonds, and incurring additional debt. So, it's likely that the principal and interest that relates to that increased debt in the future as a result of those new bond sales would not be held harmless by the state. So, that's why I have a little bit of concern there. Does that, I hope that answers your question.
Any additional questions for board members? No? And we're going to leave that on non-consent. Deborah, I'd like to thank you and Matt for being here. Mabel, Karen, and Stuart, great job, as always.
Thank you.
And you know, this is one of those items that just sometimes goes unnoticed, but it's, the work that y'all do on behalf of all of our taxpayers is critical. And your team is a big reason why our district is financially, well, one of the main reasons why our district is so financially sound and stable, and it just reinforces the awards that y'all get every year. So, thank you very much, Stuart.
Thank you.
It's greatly appreciated on behalf of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
That will take us to seven D, which we're going to go. We have a brief presentation on Monday, so I would ask the board to hold off questions on that until Monday. And then, we'll go to seven E. The board will consider approving the granting of a temporary construction easement to Misher Development for earthwork and turf replacement at Smith Middle School and Warner Elementary School, and authorize a superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Questions from board members? I have one. I just want some clarity on this. This project is not at the district expense, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Great job by you guys on that.
Thank you.
Now, that should be pointed out. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented Monday evening. We have no reason to have closed session.
Say one thing for me.
Dr. Henry wants to apparently say something, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, and this is primarily for the viewing audience, on Monday night, we're going to have Johnny Vasilka here, who is the Executive Director of Texas Association of School Administrators, and we're also going to have State Representative Patricia Harless, and they're going to be presenting our board with the Texas Honor Board of the Year. And we're also going to pause kind of in the middle of the meeting and have a little receptions, so anyone who can make it out on Monday to help us celebrate our great Board of Trustees. We would certainly appreciate you coming out. Also, just to make sure everyone knows, Mr. Jackson, Ms. Hartley, Ms. Mongoya, were all reelected this last Tuesday, so they'll be serving four more years. And Debbie Blacksher will be joining this board in December, so we're proud for that. So, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. It's probably good that you did that. I forgot to move seven E to consent. Are there any objections to that? And the board reception usual cash bar, or what do we? No, I'm just teasing, kind of. That concludes our meeting this evening. Everyone have a good night, and we will see you Monday.